Okay, it's six thirty-two. We will call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council along with the Redevelopment Successor Agency to order. I'm gonna ask Madam City Clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Osborne. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Paul and Miles.
Here.
Okay, next item on our agenda is gonna be our ceremonial portion. We're gonna ask the flag salute is gonna be by Councilwoman Suarez, and we're gonna ask Pastor Max Ewell to give us a word of inspiration from the Restoration Life Christian Church.
Please stand. Will the gentleman in the room please remove your hats? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is the pastor here? We're gonna, we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask Ms. Hoffman to give us a word of inspiration. She's always willing to give us a word of inspiration. We appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Our Father, and Son, and Holy Spirit, we thank you for your love and your kindness, and we thank you, Father, that we can call on you anytime, and your line is never busy, and you hear us. Be with us tonight as we meet together to conduct the business of the city, and as we listen to all the different difficulties and the problems that are happening and going on. May the City Council, Father, have respect for everybody and what they say. We ask these things in thy name, along with your protection for our agencies that protect all of us. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. All right. Okay, next up is our public safety report. We're gonna ask our lieutenant to give the public safety report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for January sixteenth through February fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Bullying continues to be a pervasive problem among young teens despite the media coverage, public awareness, and public educational campaigns. Bullying can be direct, which would be in the presence of the targeted teen, or indirect, such as spreading rumors. It can include physical, verbal, relational, which would be efforts to harm the relationship or reputation of the targeted teen, and damage to property. According to the National Center for Education Statistics and Bureau of Justice Statistics, twenty-eight percent of students in grades six through twelve have experienced bullying. Twenty percent of students in grades nine through twelve have experienced bullying. Thirty percent of youths admit to bullying others. Most bullying occurs in middle school, and the most common type of bullying is social and verbal. The rate of bullying is declining, but remains a prevalent and serious problem. Sometimes signs of bullying are obvious, such as unexplained injuries. Others are more conspicuous. The following signs may be indicative, indicative, excuse me, of bullying: lost or destroyed clothing, books, electronics, or jewelry; frequent headaches, stomach aches, feigning sickness; difficulty sleeping, declining grades; sudden loss of friends or avoidance of social situations; running away from home, self-harm, or talk of suicide. If you notice the above symptoms in your child, it is important to know what to do. The most important thing would be to talk to your child, avoid assumptions, and listen to your child without judgment. Avoid contacting the aggressive child, and ask the school for help. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions on the safety report?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we're at item, item D, oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body, either the Lawndale City Council or the Redevelopment Successor Agency on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to any of these bodies, we ask that you just line up by the flag. When it's your turn, just approach the podium. If you would start with your name, we would appreciate it. In about two minutes, the amber light will come on there to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Is there any wish to speak on the public comment tonight? Is this? Yeah, this will be the podium, so you can, yes, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here. My name is Dan Oomquist. I'm the managing partner with Frontier Real Estate Investments. We're the group that you selected to redevelop.
Mr. Oomquist, sorry to interrupt you, but this item is on the agenda. There's a closed session on it, so if you could wait until before the closed sessions to make your comments, that would be the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oomquist. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Zaypara. I'm here on behalf of your Lawndale Library. Just wanna make brief announcements of some of the upcoming programs that we have going. First of all, I'd like to give you an update on our Helping Hands for the teens successfully built about twenty, built twenty prosthetic hands that will be sent off to kids in third world countries that might need them. They said that I was gonna get pictures when they get delivered, so as soon as I do, I'll be sure to share them with the rest of the City Council. The Helping Hands project was generous enough to donate a three-D printer to the Lawndale Library, so we now have a three-D printer that we're hoping to use to have this project again and also teach the community about three-D printing and other STEM programs, and so that's gonna be a great endeavor moving forward. Some of the programs that we have coming up, this Thursday at twelve o'clock, we have our Immigration Services put on by, by, by U.S. Customs, so if anybody has any questions on how to become a U.S. citizen, how to become legal status about DACA, that'd be a perfect time to, to come to that session. That'll be February, this Thursday, February eighth from five to seven P.M. On February twentieth, we'll be having a family event to celebrate Black History Month. We'll be having African mask making. February twenty-first, we'll have a drum circle. And also on February twenty-first at five-thirty, we're having, we'll be having job-seeking skills workshops, so if anybody's looking to change careers or maybe a young person who's looking to start up their career, that'd be a great opportunity for them to fine-tune their job-seeking skills. And that's the update I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and residents of the city of Lawndale. My name is Sam Peña, and I just wanted to quickly update you and let you know that I am no longer working for Republic Services. And I just wanted to thank the council, the community, and the staff for, it's been a great ten years of having a great partnership, and really enjoyed working in the community. I've learned a lot about Lawndale, and you guys have always made me feel at home with all your great events that you had, from the Blues Festival to the Pirates Parade, to everything that we've done out here, and it never really felt like work. It felt like just being part of the community, so I just wanted to thank you. And also wanted to let you know that I've actually accepted a position as the Executive Vice President of the Inglewood LAX Chamber of Commerce. So we'll be in charge of actually business promotion for the South Bay and for Inglewood, for the stadium. And what's good about the city of Lawndale and its endeavors that we have with them is that it's gonna bring a lot of people, physically a lot of people into the Inglewood and the LAX area, and we wanna make sure that Lawndale captures all of that and make sure that we promote business not only in the Inglewood LAX area, but in the city of Lawndale. So again, thank you very much for everything that you've done for myself, and you'll be seeing me around, and again, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I don't have any earth-changing things to talk about, but I do, I would like to bring up something I brought up in the past. If the city has projects or even just maintenance, it would be nice to know that the city is at least trying to buy American-only steel, pipe products, cars, things like that. Buy American, help ourselves. It's been a long time since you guys have been here, and I've grown a beard since then, so. And if you, you really like to see how construction's supposed to be done, come to one sixty-fourth Street. There's a project up the street from me, and these guys are throwing this thing together. They must be working your inspector's tails off, coming back out, because these guys are really busy. They, they're throwing up the wood. And it just amazes me how small our city is. It's like it used to be. When I go to stores, I see a lot of the people who are here, a lot of people on the council, see people all the time that I recognize within the city, and I think it makes you feel good that we're that kind of a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
My name's Steve Coons, forty-six thirty Rosecrans. I have several items I wanna briefly touch on. I've lived in Trailer Park there on Rosecrans, forty-six thirty, Chet's Trailer Park, for about twenty-seven years. And when the trailer park was sold about three or four years ago, things started going downhill. We still have families in the park, but we also have a lot of drug activity, not just marijuana, but other types of drugs. And I don't know if it's within the power of this council, or just the sheriffs, or what, but I would sure like to see something done about that. I mean, I just watched on the news tonight, they can't open a marijuana clinic within, I think, a six-hundred foot of any home. And some little girl pulling her wagon past a marijuana clinic was to be cited because she was too close to the marijuana clinic. Well, if children are around, they're gonna pick it up. Also, the traffic on Rosecrans, not only in the heat of night, you know, ten, eleven, twelve o'clock, but right after the rush hour, I've noticed a lot of traffic speeding, I mean, extreme speed, sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour down Rosecrans, starting at Inglewood Avenue or beyond, going all the way to Hawthorne. And I've also noticed there are still a lot of cars making turns onto Inglewood Avenue, or onto Rosecrans from Fremona and from Buren, going, making a left, which is strictly against the rules, but because there's no sheriff there, they're getting away with it. I was almost hit in my wheelchair Sunday night. Someone making a turn onto Rosecrans from Fremona. He saw there was no traffic coming, just started to go. I had the green light, and I started to edge out, and he went ahead and made his turn, and I just had to stop dead, you know? If I'd have gone out in that crosswalk, I'd have been dead. These are a few things that, you know, you've heard me many times before about other things going on in the city. And I know you as individuals can't do anything about it unless it's brought to your attention. And I would like to see something done. I'm bringing it to your attention tonight, as I've done other things in the past.
Thank you, sir.
This is Joseph Aronesty. I live in neighboring Manhattan Beach. I came here tonight to find out who it is I might speak to about licensing for a business that me and my son are involved in, in other places, and we think that it would be good to do here. I see on your sheet that it says the agency will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code to enable the board to give direction to regarding those certain real estate properties, which is what this is about, about buying and developing a real estate property, which will provide good revenue for the city that you can do with what you want. So who is it that I would speak to about this, the agency? I mean, what does this refer to in your, on your number fourteen here on your sheet? Eric, thanks.
Yeah, you can call our Community Development Department in the morning. Call Community Development Department? And who would I speak with? Speak to Sean. Huh, Sean? Speak to Sean Jean. Sean, you're the man? Thank you very much, Sean. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marge. I'm a proud resident most of the time of the city of Lawndale. First, my complaints. First of all, I would like a few more, at least one more code enforcement officer on duty from Friday to Sunday. We had an incident where a car was parked blocking the west lane going from Fremona to Inglewood Avenue for three-plus hours. Cars were having to go around it. Several calls were made, not only by myself, the other neighbors were trying to get somebody to come out, and then all of a sudden, the car disappeared. So for over three hours, we were in an area where a traffic accident was looking for a place to happen. Again, here we go, on Inglewood Avenue. Even Pam called me, well, I saw her on the street, and told me about a very bad accident on One Hundred and Seventieth. We had a three-car accident on One Hundred and Sixty-Second Street. Can't you and Redondo Beach do something about it before I get myself killed? I'll haunt ya. Anyway, I didn't know what I was gonna say as a good thing until I listened to Doris, and she said, "The Lord has an open line to communicate." I know a good thing. If everybody would call one person they haven't called in a long time, and just ask how they are, maybe they just need a voice to talk to for a few minutes. I think that would be a very good thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Johnny Castro, Kingsdale Avenue. I didn't have any intentions of coming up here today, but as I was walking my dogs in back of pet boys, we still have a problem out there. Basically, that little area in the back, it's a dumping ground. Just went by today, and somebody dumped almost a truckload of trash out there in the back. And maybe somebody need to get with pet boys, maybe they can fence that area in with a door they can open electronically so they can get their, their trucks in and out, but that area is still a problem. They're just vacant out there, and nobody out there, and it's a little tiny fence, but they just go in there and dump everything they can get up? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there anyone else wishing to speak to the Lawndale City Council or the Successor Agency? See, and then we would close public comments, and we would bring it up to the dais for any comments from the, from the council. Let's talk with Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Okay, I wanna thank everybody that spoke tonight. I'll mention three things and I'll pass it on. Jose, thanks for the update for the library. I still haven't got over it with the vet thing, but I'll be there. Marge, I like your idea about calling a friend or an enemy, doesn't matter who. And Johnny, I'll ask our city manager looking to the pet boy incident, and the code enforcement officer, maybe he can speak on that right now?
Right now, we do have two individuals that work the weekend. One is dedicated to code, one is dedicated to animal control and parking. At this moment, the budget does not permit the addition of any additional full-time people, but we do have staff out there, and they do respond as quickly as they can. They sometimes have to prioritize calls, but it would be, it would be great if we could. At the moment, we can't.
Okay.
Not able to.
All right, with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague to my right.
So that means, before this point of clarification, so that means that residents can be, feel free, of course, to call the sheriff's department.
Absolutely. Sheriff's also are there to support us, so, and staff and sheriff will do everything they can.
You call the mayor.
Good evening. Thank you to everybody who came out tonight. You know, it's a busy night. Mondays usually are. Thank you, Jose, as usual, for your update. Seems like we have a lot of activities going on. Just wanna say thank you to Mr. Peña for your service to the city, and it's nice that we already have that built-in relationship should we, you know, foster anything with the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce in the future. Mr. White, thank you for your suggestion about American-made. I would even go further and say I always like to support two Lawndale businesses whenever I'm going out eating or whatnot, try to get it in Lawndale. And it seems like we have addressed, Councilmember Kearney addressed some of the other issues which we directed towards staff, so I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pro Tim.
All right, thank you much. Thank you much. Thank you, everybody who spoke. Appreciate it. And Jose, thanks for the update on the libraries. It's good. Sam, where did he go? I'm missing him. There he is, all the way out there. Thank you for the work. Good luck in your new endeavors. Let's see. And Steve, in regards to the trailer park, when you're seeing that activity, I saw the lieutenant making some notes, make sure you and the neighbors there know, just call them directly. You know, let them know the minute it's happening, so they can get on top of it. Appreciate it. And I think that's about all I've got. Thank you.
That's all you have?
Marge, welcome back.
All right. Okay, let me start with Sam. Sam, I also wanna thank you for your ten years of service and commitment here in the city of Lawndale, and we do similar work in government relations, and those are long hours, and a lot of times, those hours are not hours sometime that you can quantify. You have to be self-motivated a lot of times to be in your territories, and not just stick around, but just, just to say that you made it on your report, but actually to become a part of the community. And Sam, you certainly have, have done that for your ten years of being a representative for Republic Services, so you didn't just show up just to do the job, but you became part of the community. And for that, I wanna thank you and thank your, your family. I've come to know, know you as well as your family through your, your efforts for, to be the representative for Republic. So I just wanna thank you and congratulate you on your, your new position with the, the Chamber of Commerce in Inglewood. And so I suspect that I'll be seeing you probably more so in the daytime, seeing that my daytime job is in Inglewood as, as well. And yes, we do welcome some collaborations that if, if we can collaborate in any kind of way with the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, because we understand, and they're, they're lucky to have you there, because you understand the, the economic development and about business retention, and just about how the, the Renaissance that's happening in the city of Inglewood can also have a positive effect on the whole region. And so, as the mayor and elected official here in the city of Lawndale, you know, we wanna get in on that action. You know, there's gonna be a lot of tourist dollars, you know, flowing through this region, you know, whether it's going to the, the Rams games, whether it's going to the Clippers, or whether it's going to the Olympics, and a whole bunch of host of other things that's, that's coming to town. We wanna be in those positions, so it's good to have those types of relationships with the Chamber of Commerce, so you can refer them to, we have some hotels, yeah, we have hotels, so you can refer them to Lawndale, so they can stay in Lawndale, right? Right? And so we really appreciate that partnership, and I look forward to seeing you in that capacity, but congratulations and thank you. Moving on to just, I'm not gonna miss all the comments again, but I do wanna thank the librarian for, for his updates and, and for all that's going on there at the library. Yeah, a lot of activities going on in the library, and we appreciate all you do there at the library. And I want to mention also to, Mr. Castro, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Pet boys, maybe that's a good suggestion. Maybe we can have them look into that. I mean, we constantly have to keep on pet boys, for whatever reason, that's just a destination that people just feel the need to dump their stuff there. I don't know what that's about, but hopefully we can work with pet boys to get that resolved, and so it won't continue to occur. And the last item I wanted to mention is the code, well, we mentioned the code enforcement issue. Marge, thank you for bringing that to our, our attention. That has to be, in addition to being a hazard, I don't know where Marge is, maybe she stepped out, that just has to be just in and of itself annoying and selfish to have, you know, a vehicle impeded in traffic for three hours. I mean, that's, how annoying can, can that be? So I wanna thank you for bringing that to our attention, and it's not, you know, a little thing, but thank you, Marge. And I think that'll be, I'm just gonna reiterate one more time, Mr. Coons, if, as they always say, if you see something, say something. Your sheriff is the first person we need to go to for if there's any drug activities in, in the trailer park, so we can get that taken care of. Maybe we need to work with the, the landowners. I mean, I understand the trailers, the coaches themselves are owned by, you know, the, the occupancy, but the landowner itself to try to get those problems addressed if they become so, you know, dire, or before they become dire, if we can't, you know, just affect them without, you know, getting involved with the, the owners. If we need to, we would definitely do so, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. So with that, I'm gonna close public comment. We're gonna move our agenda along. So that will do it for the public comments and comments from the board members. And we are now at item F. Item F is the consent calendar. There's eight items on the consent calendar, including one item from the minutes of the successor agency. Is there any, did someone want to speak on the consent calendar?
I have two issues. I have two issues. The awards, the permits for fireworks booth and the compressed gas station project. I have some concerns about both of them.
Well, why don't we do this? Let's, if it's the pleasure of this board, let's approve the balance of the consent calendar and let's come back to the award of the permits.
Two and four.
Two and four, okay. So you want two and four.
So I'll make a motion.
That deserve another discussion too, four as well?
Yeah, two and four.
Okay, so two, so we remove two and four, okay.
Yes, so we'll pull two and four for that. I'll make a motion to approve the rest.
Okay, so the motion has been made by
I'll second.
by Protem Reed that we approved the consent calendar with the exception of two and four. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No, I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is being seconded by Councilmember Lusroy. Is there any debate on the motion? Would the council please vote on the consent calendar?
Motion approved with Councilmember Osborne absent.
Okay, let's now, let's entertain item number two, the award of permits. Why don't we start with Councilmember Kearney?
After reading the report, it says Christian Heritage Church, Landale Chamber of Commerce, Neighborhood Parent Forum, Girl Scouts, London Lake, Landale Youth Football, Westland Church of Landale and Landale Elementary School, District Education Foundation. My question is, where is our Landale Chamber of Commerce? We've had four brand-new openings, four that I know of, and no ribbon-cutting ceremony. And then I asked a question about where their money is going to and I got a response it was going to Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. Well, if we look at this, the permit, Neighborhood Parent Forum and Girl Scouts is handled by Ruthie Davis, Diane Davis's daughter, mother. So I don't know if any Girl Scout troop is in Landale. I know the Boy Scouts are in El Camino Village. So I need a breakdown, an answer where the money's going to. And so maybe our finance or city manager can answer that?
Actually, the city manager, I mean, sorry, the finance director, and I spoke about this, and he did do some inquiries and looking into the records. He has some information about the membership of the group that the chamber makes their donation to. Ken, if you please.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. Yes, I looked into the matter as far as the Girl Scouts and asked the representative if all the troops were in fact in Landale. And she said they are in Landale. I also reviewed the application that's on file for this year's fireworks and there were in excess of thirty scouts, Girl Scouts, that had addresses in Landale.
Had addresses in Landale?
Have addresses in Landale, yes.
Because to my recollection, I know they're trying to get a scout troop not too long ago, they didn't have one in there. And I know for a fact that Boy Scouts are not in Landale. They're in El Camino Village. I attend their thing, Count, Mayor Protem Reed and I attended. So, you know, it leaves me with a bad taste in my mouth at one hand, sweetened the other hand fifty-seven hundred dollars, I believe. So my big question is, where is the Chamber of Commerce? Why don't we have any ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the four new businesses came in the city of Landale? That's number two. So if you want to
Hold on, let me back up. You said on the Boy Scouts?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when one individual is contacted, the money goes to Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts of Landale.
Okay. Oh, you're saying that because the Boy Scouts are one of recipients of the funds, not because they're listed here?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Finance Director researched that the actual troops are in, I believe, El Camino Village in the county area, but their membership roster is showing members from the city of Landale. Therefore, the youth of Landale are benefiting in that sense, but the group itself is located outside of the city.
That's correct. And the fireworks code requires that thirty or more, in this case, girls benefit from this. And there are in excess of thirty on their application that have Landale addresses.
Girls, Girl Scouts, what about Boy Scouts?
The roster they turned in is all Girl Scouts, so we don't have names of Boy Scouts.
Did they indicate they were donating to the Boy Scouts?
So what does that have to do?
Okay, we're talking about two different things. In researching last year's, the activity for last year, the donations given out were partially Girl Scouts, the line shared with Girl Scouts and on Boy Scouts. But as far as this year's application, because we go through their application to make sure they're keeping the funds in Landale, this year's applications, there's thirty-plus girls for the Girl Scouts.
And that's for the Neighborhood Parent Forum?
Yes.
Not the chamber, correct?
Yes. Also, a side note, about eight years ago, our attorneys drafted an affidavit which basically had each of the organizations sign something saying that all their information is true and correct. And that kind of took us out of the business of trying to do bed checks, figure out who lives where, especially dealing with minors.
Well, to clarify, because now we're kind of mixing it up again here, is that the Neighborhood Parent Forum, Girl Scouts is one booth, the chamber's another booth, but the chamber donates back to that same Girl Scout troop. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that was my issue.
So are you saying that it could be argued that one organization is basically, one person is actually running two organizations and therefore they have two booths? Can you make that argument? Although legally, they're different organizations, but if I got, you know, A, B, and C organization and X, Y, Z and I'm controlling both of them, I have two booths, sound like. I don't know if that's against the rules, but I'm just saying that sounds like that would be, would be the case.
Well, they each would have their own five oh one C three number, so they're separate, totally separate.
Legally separate entities, I understand that the technical point is that, yes, technically and legally, they are different, you know, entities.
I know we awarded the booths already, but can we check into this for next year?
Absolutely.
And make sure everything's up and up, because like I said, it seems like it's left hand sweet and the right hand. That's a number four, I mean, two.
Okay, I have a question also on number two. I noticed we have, we're awarding seven, but there is a total of eight. And Rotary Club, it said unfortunately, eight applicant did not attend the required meeting. I believe there was a legitimate reason why they did not attend that meeting. And is there, I'm making sure, there is opportunities for eight, if I'm not mistaken, according to this. And then we have seven that's recommended tonight. Rotary would be eight, but because they did not attend a meeting, we're only recommending seven. Talk to them about the Rotary Club.
Yes, okay, you may award up to eight booths. The ninth one's always the PRSC. You can award up to eight booths. The reason why we're not recommending the Rotary is because there's three requirements that are required to get to this level, to this point. One, you attend the orientation meeting. Two, you make the deposit, and with three, the application. They made the deposit and the application, but they did not attend the opening meeting. And per the council policy, you must, it's required to attend the opening meeting.
Is there anything in the policy that depending on what the reason for, because I know it's only one meeting, my understanding, if they cannot attend that meeting or for whatever reason failed to attend the meeting, if they have within, you know, reasonable cause, is there like an exception or what have we?
The policy does not say an exception. We did not receive any phone call from them ahead of time, but I will say past history, it's been council's prerogative, they want to add on the eighth booth.
How many applicants have?
There are eight total.
Eight, eight total?
Yes, and we're recommending seven tonight.
Including Rotary?
Yes.
I'm going to recommend since there's eight total and obviously Rotary have submitted their application and was, you know, wanting to be included and for some reason, they did have a good reason for not attending that meeting. I'm going to suggest that we add Rotary, since we have, since we can do eight instead of just doing seven.
Well, I have a small issue with that. I believe we have waived Rotary in the past. Because of not showing up and not finalizing some paperwork, I would need to double-check on that, Ken, to make sure. My memory serves that we have waived them previously. And they had no notification to staff regarding this meeting. So, you know, where would we want to just voluntarily replace them for no show?
Can we, can we check on that?
It's going to take some research, I can't check it tonight, but it'll take some research.
This is a pretty short meeting to attend, so should be able to get a body there.
So you bid. Okay, why don't you check on it?
Okay.
So why don't we do this?
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I believe the code, the deadline's very strict on when you can give the permits and so forth, so, but I can check on that.
Could this one, this one request be brought back next meeting?
Let me look up the code.
If council wished to consider the Rotary?
I believe we can delay that one meeting, but let me look at the code. Doesn't happen that often.
So we should award the seven tonight and consider the eight for next meeting?
That's what we've done before, that's a good idea.
Yeah, right. And then you can see if we can bring it back after you look to see what the
Yes, I can check in the morning and go back through the different years.
I'm good with that.
I'm okay, I just am kind of in agreeance with Councilmember Reed. If they didn't call in advance, it's a little bit of a tricky situation. But yes, we can wait till the next meeting.
Well, let's do this, how would you feel if the record showed that we have not waived? Because at some point, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to wait till the next meeting. If, let's say if the record shows that we have waived before.
Right.
If that would make a decision, then it probably wouldn't be necessarily advantageous to wait. But if that would have a bearing on, you know what I mean, then it would be advantageous to wait. For me, I would like to know if they, you know.
Yeah, it would be nice to know, but like, as I said, you know, they didn't, they didn't call, they didn't pull anything. You know, we do have the policy for a reason. A phone call might have changed some things they could have known ahead of time. I'd make a motion that we approve the seven as recommended. Mr. Louis can get back to us on the circumstances around the other, but we've not heard from Rotary in any fashion, so I don't want to reward someone for not showing up.
Okay, that's an order. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor that we will accept the staff recommendation of the seven and award these seven tonight.
And I'll second it.
And second, and the staff are then will look into the history concerning the eight. Okay, so the motion has been made by Protem Reed and seconded by Mr. Kearney. Is there any debate on the motion? CNN, would the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Osborne absent.
Okay, thank you.
Number four, compressed natural gas station project. I have, you know, we're trying to balance our budget and, you know, trying to keep the union happy, us happy, the residents happy, and then we want to turn around and spend forty-eight thousand dollars plus to do a consultant to see about putting a new natural gas station at the Public Works. I don't think it's the time right now. You know, I see the South Coast Air Quality Management wants, gives us a bond for seven, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. I know we can apply for another bond or grant in April. Why can't we wait till April to see if we apply for a grant and we get it before we spend forty-eight thousand dollars on a consultant? I looked and, you know, we're saying we're going out to other cities and getting natural gases, but in the warrants, I see no billing for natural, no natural gas bills. I was told they're going to torrent again gas, but it's about fifty-nine dollars a month, but two months is three thousand dollars. I'd rather spend the three thousand dollars for the next two months, three months, instead of going out and getting a consultant for forty-eight thousand dollars.
I can comment very quickly. You raise some very, very good questions, because this has been going on for probably close to twelve months now and I've been holding this up for the very same concerns about our budget and do we need to be spending this money? And nothing has progressed to date because of, you know, our fiscal concerns. We do have a grant, I forget the source of it, but for about three hundred thousand of it, Frank? The initial grant that we have secured?
The initial, the initial of the grant is one hundred seventy-five.
Hundred seventy-five. And we're pursuing a second grant that would help with the construction.
Or we're going to apply for a second grant, correct?
Which we don't have yet, correct. If we do that, then the amount of money the general fund would have to pay would, is how much?
Would substantially be reduced from two hundred and sixty down to now thirty-seven thousand.
So the upfront costs, we've actually talked about this at staff level, can we wait? There's a benefit of having the plans in terms of applying for the second grant. It is a lot of money. At the same time, what we're balancing and struggling with is our staff going out of the city for about two hours each time they have to fill up the tanks. You get the drive about thirty minutes to get there, then it takes about thirty minutes to fill up these compressed tanks, so we're juggling that. And then the cost outside the city is more than double what we'd pay if we had the tanks in the house. So it has not been a very easy decision to bring this forward. It is possible we could wait on this a little bit, if we get more word on the grant. I know the director's been looking into that, I don't know if you have anything more to add at this point? If it's better to go now or should we wait a little bit?
The only thing, and we've left a message for the consultant, will he have honors proposal beyond, or at least till April? And we've left messages, he hasn't gotten back, but that proposal we received last year. So I'm just not quite sure, we might have to art peat again if necessary. And I would think that the prices for the design would be slightly higher, but it looks like we still have sufficient monies in those grants.
Because you said he hasn't got back to you yet, so we don't know what he's going to tell you. If it was done last year, it could go up more than forty-eight thousand dollars, correct?
Well, it could, if you look in the year's staff report, we received five proposals. A few of them are pretty, pretty close to one another, so it's very competitive. But I don't think they're going to go up so swiftly though.
I'll just add quickly too, we even talked about should we be going back to gasoline versus compressed natural gas? Because we would have to worry about building these stations, which over time do, they expire basically, it's like tanks on the trucks do. But because we have compressed natural and alternative fuel vehicles, we are receiving AQMD money every year that we are using to buy new vehicles. Without the AQMD money, we don't have a funding source for new vehicles. So we're kind of caught in this trap where we need to spend this hundreds of thousands of dollars for this fueling station, which we hope primarily the grants will fund. At the same time, we, you know, we really are kind of stuck about not going back to gasoline. So there's been a lot of discussion at the staff level about the best way to proceed and what's best for the city and most cost-effective for our operations. So I guess we could wait, we could certainly go out again. We don't know where the prices would be, they could be higher, they might be lower, they could be the same. And then there was the thought that having this might help us with the second grant. That's not for sure, we don't know that as a given.
What's the rest of the council thinking about it? Do we want to spend the money now or?
Well, I think it'd be nice if we get, if we secure the grant, pick it up at that point. If there's not a real pressing point to do this immediately, if it's not going to make a difference in getting the grant, you know, that we hold off on earmarking those funds just in case. That's my opinion.
Yeah, but do you, you think it would have a bearing on getting the grants or?
Personally, I don't think that slotting the funds would have a bearing on the grant. You know, the grant application typically doesn't have anything to do with our local funding capacity.
I don't think so either, but I was asking the city manager.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, you were looking at me.
That's fine.
As I said, I think it's very hard to say, I don't, I don't believe it's a guarantee, but there's a thought that if it would help and I know the director has looked into that a little bit, but we certainly can wait. I mean, the issue is the need, the fact that our system has met its useful life and we can no longer fill it up. It's not safe per the requirements. So we do need to go outside and we do need to construct a new one just for the efficiencies and operations.
See, we always have these issues with natural, natural gas, even with the vehicles that we purchase. The tank life is only so long. And then we end up having a vehicle we have to sell as opposed to if it was gasoline. And yeah, you want to reduce your greenhouse emissions, but at some point, you know, you're spending more because you're changing these vehicles out more frequently than you would if it was gasoline.
Correct.
And I guess this is the same issue, you know, changing out, you know, or having the need, I should say, to have an in-house, you know, supply rather than going, going out, that it would be cheaper, you know, if we just use gasoline. And I don't know if we're in a situation that where we have to use, you know, natural compressed gas or we felt compelled to because, you know, that's what people do these days and everyone is concerned about And everyone is concerned about global warming and, you know, it may or may not be, you know, scientific, depending on who you ask, and all, all those kind of things. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure, but I think at the end of the day, I, I think on this one, maybe we will kind of wait and, and see.
I, I'm okay with waiting. I think the bids are, we waited, it seems like we waited long enough, a little bit. I don't think it will hurt too much, the bids seem competitive enough where we might be able to leverage it a little. So I'm okay with waiting till we hear back about the other grant.
One more question for Frank. Frank, if we wait on it and we go RFP again, if we show the people with the grant, seeing, seeing that we're RFP, would that help? See, well, you know, we're going out for a bid for a consultant to, for the grant, for the grant for their gas, natural gas station.
The question is, I mean, well, we'll, we'll, once again, we'll try to get, we'll talk to the consultant, hopefully he'll be able to maintain this proposal and it costs.
Okay.
The question is, will it...
Okay, say, we don't, we can't, this guy doesn't want to do forty-eight thousand dollars, let's go, sixty-five thousand. We go R for RFP again. We do that, April comes, we apply for the grant, could we show that we have, went out for RFP for more bids? Would that help in the grant process?
Uh, no, not necessarily, no.
So...
No, it doesn't, it doesn't give us any advantage.
Okay, so there is no advantage to the grant? Okay. That's my question.
Okay, it seems like we have a consensus to, to pull this item and just kind of wait on that, that item, item number four. Do we need the motion, do you want a motion to, to do that, just, just leave it?
We'll bring it back at a future date.
Okay. All righty. Let's move our agenda along. Okay, we are at item number nine. Item number nine is a public hearing regarding the rules and regulations for the use of park facilities. Okay, let's have the, staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, nice to see everyone tonight. Tonight, we're here to discuss rules and regulations for use of park facilities. Just a brief history, back in oh-four, we had policy seventy-eight oh-four, which was developed, was basically addressing the few park facilities that the city had at that time under that policy. When the community center was opened to the public in two thousand and twelve, we combined the community center policies and regulations with seventy-four oh-five. So it's gotten to the point where we are going to divide the two, just so we have two separate operating policies. Because, you know, seventy-eight oh-four can, can get rather large with two, so makes a lot of sense now that we're five years into the community center. We know a lot of the activity in there. Back in oh, two thousand and twelve, we didn't know what was coming in terms of activity, so now we know what we have, so we're in the process of dividing those. So, staff is suggesting that council policy seventy-eight oh-four as reside, as revised by the governing policy for the following facilities. So seventy-eight oh-four will cover the following facilities, Hogan, Hopper, Rudolph Park, the baseball fields at Jane Adams, the athletic fields at Will Rogers Park and William Anderson Park, the softball diamond at William Green Park and the William Green Community Room, as well as the William Green Park, baseball field and athletic fields, and also the city's show wagon trailer. So we're, we're proposing that seventy-eight oh-four will cover those facilities. Stack, staff is recommending a number of changes to council policy seventy-eight oh-four due to the increased number of city facilities. We have several new facilities now since that policy was developed. Rudolph, Hogan renovation, Hopper and the community center, of course. So the city has really expanded over the past number of years with terms of recreation facilities. And the, the increased use of parks by the community for celebratory events such as birthday parties, family gatherings, picnics, and a host of other uses now. What we used to have in the old policy was a permit situation for open space use for groups of twenty-five or more, just to try to keep things manageable, try to keep a close vest on things. But, you know, with the new facilities and the popularity of the parks, it's become unmanageable to, to issue park permits for open space. So there's basically seven bullet points, I'm going to go over really quickly before I address any of your questions you may have. But in terms of open space reservations, the city's no longer going to offer reservations for open space. What we mean by open space is just picnic benches, just general open spa- park space where people want to come and have a picnic and have a family gathering, whatever it may be. So that's one element of seventy-eight oh-four that is going to be removed. All park space that is not available for reservation, reservation spaces, once again, will include athletic fields, the community room, baseball fields, the city's show wagons, such like that. So if it's open park space for picnics and whatnot, all that space will be available to the community on a first come, first served basis. The big part of these, this reservation revision here is the reservation payment process. We're now going to start implementing, upon your approval, of course, a new payment procedure that is different than what we've had in the past. If somebody wanted to reserve a facility in the past, they would pay the full one hundred percent of the fees upfront. Now we're going to a twenty-five percent non-refundable payment process, which basically it's more customer friendly. It lets, it lets us reserve facilities faster. So essentially what somebody can do is walk into the community center, complete an application, and leave twenty-five percent deposit of the hourly fee. So if you're renting a facility for a twenty-dollar facility for four hours, your twenty-five percent non-refundable deposit will be twenty dollars. Very, very simple, it doesn't include deposits, insurance, all the other stuff. So what that does is right there, that ties up the facility, we put them in the reservation system, it's done. Then they have a timeline to finish paying the balance of fees before it becomes an actual reservation. That's the second big change in the policy as well. And that will, and as, when I mentioned dividing the policies, we're now working on a community center policy, which I'm working with the city attorney's office as we speak to get that done very soon. So now we'll cover all of our policies. But this reservation payment process will roll over to the new policy as well, if, if you folks like it. We certainly think it's more customer friendly and, and more, more functional and comprehensive. The third bullet point on page two, if you're following, is jumpers and bounce houses. That has been extracted from the policy back in, if you folks remember, back in February of last year, just a few days past, one year ago. We eliminated jumpers and bounce houses at all the parks in Lawndale, per the recommendation of our assurance authority, because there's been lots of issues with those. You know, jumpers collapsing, kids getting trapped, kids getting hurt. So they suggested we don't take on that liability. So, you know, this has been under our belt for a year now, we've really had no complaints from the public. So we are no, we're just affirming that, we're memorializing that in policy seventy-eight, seventy-eight oh-four. It's been in practice for a year, but it's, it's going to be in writing and it's going to be removed, so they will still, no longer be allowed.
Mike, can I ask you for a quick clarification on that? If we're no longer reserving the free open space area, how are we going to advise folks that they are not allowed to have a jumper in the park?
We have signs at the parks and, and before, regardless of the number of the people that you, that were involved in your reservation, our, our benchmark was twenty-five or more, which required an open space park. Well, if you had a jumper and we knew about that and you told us about that, we would require a permit for a jumper regardless of anything. Whether there was more than twenty-five people or less, whenever there was a jumper, we wanted to make sure that we permitted, so we had proper insurance and cover all of our bases. So we've had signs at all the parks for well over a year now, and a lot of times people will call, they'll say, hey, can we have a jumper? And we'll say, yeah, sorry, we don't allow them. So it's usually worked out, if we do find a jumper, which has happened maybe once or twice since I've been here, if we do find a jumper that's not approved, they are asked to remove it. The jumper company comes, they take it out, because if they're there without our approval, then they're uninsured and there's just more chances of other issues. That's happened maybe once or twice in my almost eleven years here now, so.
Good, thank you.
Next bullet, parks not available for reservation, Hogan Park, Hopper Park and Rudolph Park, our three pocket parks are not available for reservation right now, just because they are small neighborhood parks. They usually, they all have parking issues, and when those parks were built, they were neighborhood parks, you know, for people to walk to. They basically weren't built for user groups of fifty or more, a hundred or more, some of the larger groups. So if we do run, run into those situations, we'll address those on a case by case basis and speak to the people and work with them, so they know that, you know, that they can't dominate the park with a larger group. And if we do get a larger group, we would suggest that they go to another park. Security provision, this is added, a couple other local cities do this as well, so we kind of stole it from them. But it's basically extracted from the community center policy or more as, as well, is reservations, maybe, maybe it's a baseball field where you got two hundred people that want to watch this game and play baseball. Well, groups in excess of a hundred individuals will now require security for that at the cost of the applicant. It just keeps, keeps things clean, you know, our part-time staff really can't manage the large groups like that, so. And this is consistent with the community center policy that we put in seventy-eight oh-four back in two thousand and twelve, so. And that is by sworn officers of the LA County Sheriff's Department, Lawndale Division as well. The other, the other big change to, I don't want to say big change, I want to say affirmation in seventy-eight oh-four that we're adding, is commercial activities and fundraising prohibited. You know, we often have people that want to come in and sell tickets to their event. They want to sell things, they want to do fundraising and stuff like that, which we'll address in a minute. But the, the community center is not available for commercial activities, so what we're doing in seventy-eight oh-four is just affirming this, that, you know, and we've had, as you know, we've had people come in and try to disguise their events as a fundraiser, so they can sell all this stuff and keep the money. So fundraising will still be allowed, as it says here, by five oh-one C-three nonprofit corporations, community groups, government entities, just as long as there's no money exchanging hands on site. So if a nonprofit group wanted to do a fundraiser, maybe, you know, the school district used to use our facilities years ago for their educational foundation fundraiser, well, they would have to sell, pre-sell tickets offsite. We just don't want money exchanging hands on site in the community center because it gets sticky. And we had had people in the past that would say, hey, we want to do this fundraiser, and it's, they're just disguising it as a way to sell things or, you know, maybe have a live entertainment show and charge people at the door. And that's basically what we're doing with seventy-eight oh-four, is prohibiting commercial activities. And it's always been that way, but it's being affirmed now in seventy-eight oh-four, just so everybody's clear. If somebody questions it, we can show them in writing. New fee for reservation cancellations, if we, we don't have many of these, I was talking to the city manager recently and he asked me, how many do we have a year? I think we have maybe one or two of these a year where somebody will have, have a death in the family, if something's going on, they have to cancel the reservation. Our reservation cancellation policy is less than five working days. You know, we, we, we can recover all of our costs if any, and we can actually keep their, their entire reservation fees in retention under the city, if that's the case. But in excess of five days, they're eligible to get a refund, less all the costs that the city has incurred. And generally, the city hasn't incurred many costs, but one, one thing we thought we would present in there is to get a little bit of cost recovery on the staff time it takes to put together a reservation. You know, in a nutshell, it takes about an hour to put together a reservation. And the person we have working at that position is, you know, that, that range, that salary range goes from about thirteen to an hour to about fifteen and a half per hour. The, the C step at that is it's, it's just under fifteen dollars a, an hour, so we thought that a little bit of cost recovery here would be fair. So when staff spends that time to compile the reservation and then somebody wants to cancel for whatever reason, you know, we don't even ask them why they want to cancel. If they want to cancel, they do, but they'll usually tell us that we would retain fifteen dollars just to recover that staff time that it took to put the reservation together. So that's a small change there, it's not a whole lot of money and it's not going to put anybody out on the street, but it basically allows us to recover our costs. So we're not doing all that work for free and we're getting a little bit back. And just as a summary, I kind of mentioned a, a little bit before, is seventy-eight oh-four was formerly a policy that included the community center, the annex, the city and school district owned or city-controlled parks and the show wagon mobile trailer. So we have two resolutions here for you folks tonight, and one of the resolutions, CC eighteen, CC dash eighteen oh-two dash double oh-six. That's the, with the approval of that resolution, we're essentially going to have no community center policy in place for the short, short term until we get the community center policy done, which should be in the next, I would think, the two meetings or so. I think we should probably come back with that in March or April, hopefully. So what we're going to do is we're just, those, those policies, the current policies will remain in place, but, you know, generally speaking, eighteen oh-two dash double oh-six, the second resolution that you folks will look at tonight, is basically leaving us without a community center policy until we get that one done. It has to go one way or the other, we couldn't do them both at once, we had to do one before the other, so that's the way that one's going to work out. So with that comes staff recommendation, staff recommends that the city council approve attached revision of council policy seventy-eight oh-four, rules and regulations for the use of park facilities and the city's show wagon mobile trailer. In addition, staff recommends that council approve CC dash eighteen oh-two dash double oh-four and CC dash eighteen oh-two double oh-six as well, along with policy seventy-eight oh-four. And staff is here for questions, if there are any.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to open it up. Is there any technical questions to that report?
No. Okay, thank you for that thorough report. Okay, it is now seven thirty-four and we will open the public hearing, seven thirty-four. I'm going to ask those who would like to testify in this matter, if you will stand and the city attorney will swear you in. Are there any willing to testify in this manner? Matter, I should say. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. I'm going to bring up to the diocese for any conversations on the staff recommendations.
I, I have one.
Yes.
Under the reservation payment process, Mike, if you go, scroll down, it says, "Those canceling a reservation are failing to pay the balance of the fees when due to the city will lose a non-refundable." Well, I don't think non-refundable should be in there, because it's non-refundable. It should be, will lose the facility use and will be opened up to, available to other interest parties. I think putting non-refundable in that sentence like an oxy- worn statement, why are you putting a non-refundable in there? It's non-refundable, they're going to lose it anyway.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
In that specific case, yes, but we're talking about just in general.
Well, I don't think the non-refundable should be in there, because you're going to...
I understand.
Okay. That's just my correction in that line, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
And keep in mind, we have two resolutions that they're asking us to, that they're recommending. Is there any additional, any additional questions or statements anyone would like to make? Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning the staff, recommendations of both resolutions?
If no other changes or additions, I recommend staff report. I mean, recommendation of the staff? With the recommendation, recommendation of the staff?
Okay, so, I'll, I'll second. So the motion's been made that we take the staff's recommendation through adoption of both resolutions, eighteen zero-two dash zero zero four, as well as eighteen zero-two dash zero zero six. And it was seconded by Pullen Miles. Is there any debate, any discussions on the motions?
No.
Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Osborne absent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, council.
Thank, thank you for that report. Okay, next item on our agenda is item ten of the administration's council mid-year budget report. Give us just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we present the mid-year report. The purpose of the mid-year report is to apprise council as to the status of the budget at the midway point in the fiscal year. The emphasis is always on the general fund, as that's the primary discretionary fund, whereas special funds are restricted for their designated purpose. So let's look at the revenue side of things first. Basically, we're kind of trying to give ourselves a report card at the halfway point in the fiscal year. Our budget's comprised of revenues and expenditures, so let's look at the revenue side first. First, we see there's an increase in motor... First, we see there's an increase in motor vehicle license fees. This, we underestimated what we thought we'd bring in, that's running about 50,000 higher than we thought. Encroachment permits are running considerably higher, and basically, that's because local utilities are embarking on major projects in Lawndale, and are also required to obtain these type of permits. Building and planning fees are also up cumulatively close to 200,000 this year, so that's really, we're really excited about that. Turning to the expenditure side of the house, and by the way, I'm just hitting the major, major highlights tonight, but feel free to ask me to scroll down any of the items, I'll be glad to. On the expenditure side of the house, we have savings in three of our departments due to vacancies, MSD, Public Works, and Community Services. We also had a temporary sheriff vacancy in December in a motor deputy, so we had some savings there as well. We had one overage, Public Works had building equipment maintenance expenditures greater than anticipated. I believe it had to do with the HVAC, some HVAC repairs. So cumulatively, when we take into consideration our overages in revenue, and our expenditures less than we thought, it is a positive fortune, 52,000, that we're adjusting up our estimated fund balance. So what does that 452 do to our estimate? It increases it to a projected 16 million, oh, three, three. So where will we be come June 30th, the way things stand? Basically, we'll still have a solid fund balance of 16 million, and we anticipate about 5 million of that is made up of liquid cash and investments. The balance is made up of the receivable owed to us from the state. Now, you'll recall that in a recent staff report, the city manager brought to council's attention different concerns, fiscal, fiscal issues we'll be dealing with, not so much in this fiscal year, but in the upcoming year. You can see that in the current year, we're pretty healthy, things are going pretty well. However, just, just over the river, we see, we see some issues due to the upcoming sheriff increases. You recall that this year, we had to deal with the sheriff increase of 470,000, and as you can see, over the upcoming years, there'll be increases anywhere from 250,000 to 400,000. So in that staff report, the city manager addressed different things that, that we'd like to have a discussion about to, to help our fiscal situation in future years. One of them was the potential possibility of looking at increasing our sales tax, and possibly look at increasing our TOT tax, to try to offset some of these major upcoming sheriff costs. Now, looking at sales tax, first of all, I think one common misconception is, residents think that when they pay sales tax, or, or people in the city, when they pay sales tax, that it all goes to the city. Actually, it's quite different than that. If you look at this graph, you'll see that, basically, eight and a half percent goes to either the county or the state, and the city only gets 1% of the sales tax. Now, something we are gonna be facing in the future is, you'll see that with the total sales tax in Lawndale being 9.5, and the state setting a cap on sales tax at 10.25, that only leaves a possible percent available of .75. And we know, based on recent history, that very likely, the county or the state could, could add a sales tax measure, which would swallow the remaining part of that availability. So moving forward, we, again, we know we'll have major challenges coming up due to the sheriff costs, and some, some payoff and pay-down of pension liability. And we really want council to start to, help us start to look at the alternatives, maybe consider a community outreach, or some kind of community engagement, to see what, what the goals are of the community, if they wanna continue to maintain the current levels of service. Do we wanna look into possible, you know, increased sales tax to go towards the sheriff costs? Or, just basically determine what levels of service are important to the community. And that's, that's it, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the treasurer? The finance director?
No, I think that was a pretty good report, thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
On the sales tax, I brought up, I think, last city council meeting, that El Segundo put on their ballot about the sales tax.
He did.
Fail-safe sales tax, in case the county comes and wants to take that, can you put that slide up? About .75%. If they wanna come and raise it to 10%, or 10 point...
That point.
10.25?
Yeah.
That extra three-quarters of percent would go to the city of Lawndale, not the county. Is there any way we can poll the city, the residents of Lawndale, to see if they're be in favor of it, without doing a consultant and spending thousands and thousands of dollars for, can we do a little mailer, or take a quadrant, see what they say? Because I think it's a good idea, it's a fail-safe idea. The county comes in, next year and says, "Okay, we're gonna raise it to 10.25." We already have it on the books that the voters said yes. That's three-quarters of percent comes back to the city of Lawndale, not to the county, which I don't know how much money that is, but I sure, I'm sure it's over a dollar. So is there any way we can poll the residents, without hiring a consultant? Or can we do a little mailer, or something like that?
We could. The, the issue when we do it like ourselves is that it's how you select your sample. Is it a forced response, is it, is it a voluntary response? If we do a mass mailing to every resident, of course, the majority will not reply. So we really won't get a true sampling of what the, our community is wanting or not wanting. If we were to secure the services of a professional firm, for example, that would do maybe a random sample, where they contact people and they get a forced response, so they can actually have verifiable responses, and say, "Here, we have a 98% reply," or whatever, that would probably be a lot more accurate. So, we, so can we do it? Yes. Would the results be, I don't know if the results would be that accurate or useful for us, but we certainly could do that. We've done mass mailings before that would run probably about $10,000. I don't know what a consultant would cost if we wanted to explore that. I know finance director's been looking into that, in terms of a consultant. If we were to pursue a ballot measure, there's an expense to that. But the answer is, can we do it? Yes. I, I would be concerned with the results, but we certainly could do it.
And, and the paragraph right there says, "Project this magnitude, blah, blah, consulting services, community surveys, interviews, graphics, mailers, and feedback will cost approximately 77, between $77,000 and $85,000." So if we use a consultant, do all this, and it comes back the same thing a mailer did, it's just throwing, you know, shoving it into the ocean.
If the results were the same, true.
Yes. So I don't know how the council feels, but if I, I'm a resident here, I would do it, I would do it.
Yeah, I think that, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would be happy to lock that into the city, with the caveat that we only put it in there if the county's going to look to raise these taxes again.
Yes, it only is after the county.
Yeah, it would be a trigger, that's only, a mechanism, only would be triggered, should the county seek to impose an additional sales tax. So we beat them to the trigger, and therefore, we've already reached the cap, and so we would be shielded from any additional rate increase in taxes, whereas other cities who have not reached that cap, it would be imposed on them. My only question would be, I, I do wanna hear from the community, like Mr. Pat Kearney stated, but I am concerned about the accuracy of just doing a, a mailer, per se, and it, it is not the same, though, unfortunately, as a forced response. One of the jobs that I took as a, as a lad was, was doing telemarketing, and we're doing exactly what you're, you're speaking of. And that, that training led me to believe that it is not exactly the same, that if you sent me a mailer, and I'm gonna do a questionnaire, but doing that, that, that forced response helped you to get in more of an accurate picture. 'Cause what you don't wanna have happen is, it, it comes back, and let's say it comes back either way, and it's not a reflective of the true sentiments of the community as a whole. Maybe for some reason, it comes, the answer one day could be one way, because of how a person feel, maybe things are going on in his or her life, or the economy, or what have you. And then the next day, it could be totally different. But with a forced response, those kinda questions are kinda more anticipated, to get a real accurate, more response. Unfortunately, it sounded like it might be more expensive, well, I'm sure it's gonna be more expensive, but you probably will be able to rely on the data. For me, if I'm gonna do it, I wanna be able to rely on the data to say, "Okay, I can, I can rely on this," and then make an informed decision on which way I'm gonna go, because I can know that the data is accurate, rather than just, you know, something else, send someone's mailer. That's just me.
Yeah.
But at some point, that might even be cost prohibitive.
Mr. Mayor, you might recall that in 2008, we were contemplating putting up the community center, which we now have across the street, and at the time, we needed to devote the people, 'cause it's in excess of a million dollars. Well, the council very diligently, you know, brought in a consultant, and the consultant had community meetings, educated the community as pro, the pros and cons, didn't take one side, just kinda basically educated the community. And it was successfully passed by like 80%, which is pretty high for voting.
Right, it was really high.
And, and the community said, "Yes, we want the community center."
So I guess at this point, it would be just how we would, would wanna go about doing it. We, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
It really depends on, on timing. If the council's desire is to look at our options to consider a ballot measure, I believe we are running out of time in terms of the scheduling, and Mr. Louie had looked into that, in terms of noticing, declaring election, doing the public outreach, the education. The next available opportunity would be 2020 to do a, a measure on the ballot. So it's either 2018 or 2020 at this time.
And crudely put, if we're looking at a sales tax measure, requires a little more education, a little more being on the community, that the consultants are talking to, basically, they need to get going on it right away. If it's a TOT, that generally, you have a little more time, because the folks that would be involved are really your outside people who are paying the hotel tax. So you have a little more time for doing a TOT, but the TOT's a lot less money, bringing in to cover the sheriff's costs. I'll tell you.
But a, a good point was raised earlier, this is something actually we saw that City of El Segundo's doing, as Councilman Kearney's brought up, is there is a limit to the amount of sales tax that can be collected. And if the county were to implement another measure, and take every city to that max, then cities could no longer pursue any kind of revenue for their own city. So, pursuing this, then holding the money at bay, not, not implementing it until such time the county were to do something, again, the thought is, it's better for the money to come to the residents than give it to the county, so.
Right.
I, I agree, and I, I mean, it's, it would be hard for me to believe that a resident, given all the information, wouldn't come to the same conclusion that if the county imposed an additional sales tax, which we have no, obviously, we would get a vote on it, but we're one of 88 cities that would get, get a vote on it, that we would rather insulate ourselves from such, because it won't be up to us to put it on the ballot, they could put it on the ballot themselves, obviously, and we'll, we'll be, just have to respond to it. So I think we should look at what El Segundo has done.
So you okay spending the money for a consultant?
Now, what was the amount on the consultant again?
Between 77 and 85,000.
If we were to go down that path, that would mean that we're looking to do a measure for this, for this November, that if passed, would not be implemented until such time the county were to pursue something, which could be months, or could be years.
Well, in that, in that case, we wouldn't be doing a consultant to get the, the pulse of the community, we'd be hiring a consultant to put on the ballot measure, and to...
'Cause otherwise, if we got that data, then by the time we got around to doing it, it'd be two years old, and it would be outdated, more than likely.
Right. So it's not like we can do a quick polling, and get it back in the next 30 days, and have enough time to put a measure together.
It really put, it would be very tight.
Right.
Right.
That'd be...
We could certainly come back at another meeting, though, and another couple of weeks will not matter, I don't believe that much. Mr. Louie?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Timing-wise, and if we were to, you know, pursue the consultant, and then make a decision, or... But you were saying, the consultant with his expertise, and knowing what goes into this process, it needs to be begun pretty quickly.
Yes, the consultant I reached out to, the reason why I reached out to that consultant, 'cause the city's had experience with that consultant on a couple of different issues, most notably, the community center. They said, "Yes, the sales tax requires a lot more lead time, the TOT is a little bit less lead time." But they, whoever's chosen, it would need to hit the ground right away, running right away.
Obviously, I think it's very clear, when this was first brought up, when I brought this up back in December, it was clear the council did not wanna pursue this, but at this point, you're looking at it as terms of protecting the city and, and the resources for the residents, so obviously, it's in a whole different light.
Yeah, and beating the county, I mean, the county can always come up with a reason to increase the sales tax for, you know, whatever, other, worthy, you know, item that need to be funded, and then we just held to respond to it. So I think, let me make sure I'm, I'm clear, when we talk about consultants, there, there's two. A consultant to, to survey the community, to see their, how they feel about it. Or if we made a decision just to do a, a sales tax, then the consultant's actually put the sales tax on the ballot and do the outreach that's, that's necessary for the, the sales tax.
You can approach it either way, but the consultant feels that the community needs a degree of outreach to really understand where the funds are going, it's not just that the city raising taxes, that these funds are going directly to our parks and to our sheriffs.
Were you talking about outreach before we make the decision, or outreach while we make a decision? While it's on the ballot, while we make the decision, and we educate them, similar to what you would do in a campaign?
It would be similar to what we did with the community center, where they went out to the community, held outreach meetings, and if there was some degree of interest, then they would put it on the ballot.
So you do that first, and then you, then we put it on the ballot?
Yes.
And that one's not as costly as when you put on the ballot? But it sound, sound like you, you would need it twice, then if you do it that way. You're gonna, you're gonna survey the community, and let's say that comes back, you know, positive, positive meaning, go ahead and do it. Then when you put it on the ballot, you need a consultant to, to bring it to the finish line.
And that's a good point. There are different increments in the process, and if the consultant feels that it won't be able to go forward at any point, the contract could be stopped at different increments. So in other words, you would only pay the full amount, as if the chem, the community had strong interest, you'd go all the way through.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think, again, it's all down to the messaging and making sure that we're saying, "This is incremental only if county comes up and says, 'We wanna take it.'" Again, we've talked about it before, we're not looking to increase sales tax ourselves. You know, it would be an answer to some of our budgetary issues that are forthcoming in the coming years, but our, our point here is to block it from being taken straight out of us, going to the county, and not any of it coming back here, or a very minor portion of that .75 coming back here. So, you know, to, to reserve it for the city, and put it, it sounds like we have a tight timeline to actually get it on the 18 ballot. We would certainly wanna try to get that, I would like, you know, I would wanna try to get that secured, rather than having to push it to 20, and then find out the county brings something in and beats us.
Before.
It's a risk, waiting till then.
So the issue is about the consultant part. We, we agree that we wanna safeguard ourselves from, from the county, so the, the issue is about the, the consultant. Do we hire a consultant as if we're going all the way? And then, of course, it's incremental, as, as you suggested, and for some reason, if we decide not to go all the way, because once we start doing the outreach, and the community don't have the appetite for it, and we decide not to go all the way, then, then it, it counts itself out.
It does, yeah.
So, really, the decision is to, a ballot in 2018 or not.
So then you budget...
And if you wanna do it, then we, we take the path to put it on the ballot, hire this consultant that we've used in the past to do the outreach, the education, to help us with the ballot measure itself, and then we move ahead with the thought that we would pursue this, and put the money at bay, not, not implement it until such time the county did something. If you choose not to pursue it in 2018, then there's really no reason to hire anybody.
So, Councilman Swears, what do you think?
I think that we should put this on the agenda and have a discussion.
We can bring it back, with more detail. And we could have the consultant present, we could have the, the firm come and speak to you also. So we could bring this back at either the last meeting, the next meeting or the first meeting in March, probably at the latest, I think.
Okay, yeah, we need to do that pretty fast, yeah, okay.
We definitely want all five of us here for that particular conversation.
And I really think we should try to get it for 2018.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Can you have the next meeting?
Yeah, they can have the consultant.
I think we can do that, yes, we'll have it back for, for a full discussion.
Okay. Okay, so that would be the, the order. Okay, so, that was the...
There are still recommendations for...
The report, yeah, that was the, the report, and we're still on the treasurer's report, yeah. Mr. Finance Director, you, you still have some, you still have additional, right?
Oh, nothing new reported, sorry.
That's all, that's all you have, okay. So there is recommendations, though, we need to adopt from. Okay. Okay, so what, what is the, the pleasure of this body concerning the, the mid-year report?
See, receive and file and bring back that point seven five conversation for the next meeting.
There's also the items two and three about.
Yeah.
Revenues.
Yes, we have the one-time revenues based on current activity and then the de, the, uh, decrease due to some vacancies, which will not be present next year.
Okay, give us, give us one, one second, let us review that again, um, what, what, what page is that on? Three? No, I'm sorry. Mr. Treasurer, what, what, what page is that on?
It's on page five of the report. You're basically, you're basically just updating the budget. We're gonna decrease some appropriations and increase estimate revenue.
Receive and file mid-year report, we say that increased estimate revenue, okay. Uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand in general funds, uh, decreased general fund expenditures.
Basically housekeeping to update our numbers.
By a hundred and seventy-three thousand, and then discuss the need for the community assessment consultant, we did that. And we said yes on that one, okay. And receive the budget report, we said yes on that one, receive. So the other two would be two and three, the, um, increased estimate revenue by two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Correct, items one, two, and three can be part of one motion if that's.
I'll make the motion.
One, two, and three could be one motion, okay.
That we approve. Receive and file increased estimate revenue and then, uh, by two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred in the general fund and decreased general fund expenditures appropriations by one hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and thirty.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Councilmember Suarez that we accept the, the staff recommendations on item one, two, and three. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
I'd like to see, uh, we come back the next round that we look at the T O T and see if we can increase that too. Do we need a consultant for that?
Community two for one special.
Yeah, we can have, yeah.
That's a good point, if you were to look at both, the same person, it probably has some economies of scale there.
Okay, that'd be a different discussion for, not, not for tonight, but thank you. Okay, so what is the pleasure of this body concerning, um, two and three? The motion's been made by Councilwoman Suarez. Did we receive a second, okay, second by Councilmember Pat Kearney, um, would the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Osborne absent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Next item is item number eleven, items from the council members and governing board members. Let's start with, um, Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Yes, I did attend to a, uh, two events. The first one, Councilwoman Suarez and I and the mayor were at the, uh, Fourth Annual South Bay Legislative Meeting greet. We saw all the heads of state, the head of, uh, the nation with vaccine waters. It was enjoyment, I met, saw people, I met new people. And also, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Reed, Mayor Paula Miles, Councilwoman Suarez, and I attended the homeless count. It was a fun-filled night.
Fun-filled night.
And that's it.
That's it, thank you, thank you, sir. Madam?
As Councilmember Kearney mentioned, I attended both of those events. Uh, in addition, I also attended, um, the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, um, January meeting. And, uh, just a few things, they, we did have an update with Metro about the alternative routes. So there's a few options out there, I highly encourage any residents that are being impacted by that, well, most of Landale will be, um, to go look on their website, they do have them posted, they are planning to have, um, two field trips per se, to go to the Gold Line and kinda see the layout for there. So I would encourage our residents to, um, those who are interested to definitely look at that. And there should be more community outreach coming for that, and with that, I'll pass it along.
All right, thank you, um.
Mayor Pro Tim Daniel Reed.
All right, thank you, thank you. Now, uh, I had attended sixty-second district, uh, meeting just to meet a few candidates that are coming up on the November ballot and see what's going on in the area. And at that point, I was providing some information on Agenda Twenty-One. There's gonna be a community town hall, nonpartisan meeting in Westchester for anyone that's interested. Uh, six-thirty P M, February fifteenth, I have the address, I can provide that to you, it's seventy-one sixty-six Manchester Avenue. This is to talk about an Agenda Twenty-One situation that seems to be coming back, uh, from United Nations, coming into the States and coming together. So there's some interest coming, and if you're interested in finding out about it, this would be a good meeting to attend. Uh, Debbie, I'm gonna butcher this, Paca, Pasagalupe.
Yeah, that's you.
Uh, is gonna be the speaker, she's known on this subject and, and keeping tabs on everything. So that would be, again, at Agenda Twenty-One. So I'll have information available in case anyone needs it, and I'll provide this to the city so that they have, uh, some flyers as well, uh, that we can put out. I also attended the, the homeless count, that was my first one to go out and about, it was good, we did two parcels and, yeah, it was a fun, interesting night. And let's see, the last thing that I have is I would like to request an agenda item on February twentieth to discuss waiving the deposit fee for the community center for upcoming memorial for Ramsey. As, uh, we have additional information the mayor will share on that here momentarily.
That's it, thank you, sir. Okay, so I did attend all those meetings that was enumerated by Councilman, um, Pat Kearney, including the, the homeless count. I have to tell you that my three colleagues abandoned me and I was voted off the island when I was supposed to, yeah, I gotta bring it out. And so I ended up going with another troop, but, but just as, as much, we, we had a, a good time counting. Um, and our quadrant was pretty, it's pretty big, but it was, it was slow. And we didn't, um, encounter any, um, homeless, um, populations, um, um, that night. But, um, I wanna thank, um, those who came out to the homeless, um, count. It's, it's really, it's funny because one of the, a lady, I can't remember her name, she was part of the homeless count, part of the, the group that came out. And a couple of days later, whatever it was, I was at the, the high school that was having a performance, um, to pick up my, uh, my daughter. And, um, I needed a jump. And guess who's, who's parked right next to me? The lady I met for the first time at the, the homeless count. And she just happened to have jumper cables and everything, so she gave me a jump. And so in addition to counting the homeless, you know, we did meet, you know, some new people and new friends and, and things. So that, so that was, that was good, that was kinda ironic right, right there. So I wanted to thank, thank those who came out to, um, to do the homeless count, because that's important because by doing that homeless count, we're, we're able to make sure that the county allocate the efficient, sufficient resources to our city to service the, the homeless population and hopefully to get them off the streets and to, um, permanent housing. So that was really important that we participated in that, so thank everyone for, for doing so. Okay, I also attended BizFid, BizFid, um, tenth, um, year anniversary reception. As you guys may recall, about a week or two ago, a council meeting ago, a gentleman, um, came, um, represented to give us a, a presentation on the things that, um, BizFid, um, what they're involved in in terms of, um, um, business retention and just reaching out to the business community and making, um, your community, you know, the business community, uh, more connected, um, to government as, as well as bringing business to the cities. And so we're thinking that we might join them, well, that's still a discussion, so I did attend their tenth year anniversary. I also attended the, um, the Green Line Extension, I think they got a new name for it, the South Bay Rail Extension. But it's a, the Green Line Extension. So myself and some representatives from, council members, I should say, from, um, Torrance and Redondo Beach had a sit-down discussion with, with, um, Janice Hahn, Supervisor, um, Janice Hahn, and she's also a member of the Metro Board. And so we had a sit-down along with, uh, Metro staff, really to talk about the three, um, issues that the three cities, um, have. While we appreciate the, the activities of the Council of Governments, which includes sixteen cities, the three cities that's gonna be mostly impacted, um, by the, the light rail, um, extension project is Landale, Torrance, and Redondo Beach. And for that reason, um, we had a sit-down with the, um, with the board mem, Metro Board Member, um, Janice Hahn. And she wanted to hear firsthand of, um, our issues, um, with, um, the project. And we had a good opportunity, just a, really a robust, um, conversation, a frank conversation, you know, if, if, if you, you will. Um, when I first got, um, word that we was gonna have a conversation, and I, I kinda made the joke, but I was really serious, that, you know, I've been to a hundreds of these meetings that has to do with, um, the Green Line Extensions. And these meetings, you have to have your diplomacy hat on, you know, at a lot of these meetings. But a lot of times diplomacy is not how you get things done. You, you can't be in some cases, um, as diplomatic as you would like to be. So I stress that if this is one of those meetings that, you know, where you, you know, you, you know, the cameras are on, you have to be diplomatic and nice-nice, then I don't need it. I don't need it, everyone knows, um, the, the city's position on the Green Line. Um, we have been very engaged in this process for the last, um, couple of years. Um, but they assured me, no, you'll be able to have a frank decision, and I made the, the comment, if I need to say, what the, beep beep, then I wanna be able to, free to be able to do that, because that's how things in, this type of project actually, um, pan out. That's when they hear you, if, if you will. And I have to do, say that Supervisor Hahn, um, was very open and Metro was very, um, open to, um, what we're looking for, um, in the city. They had some, some things in the, um, the current proposal that I heard rumors that was in that proposal, but wasn't, um, sure. It, good, good things. Um, according to the slide, I see our, um, and, and let's give a, let me, let me give a shout-out really quickly while, while I'm doing this to, to, um, to, to Sean. Because Sean is our, our point person, has been our point person on this, and he, he's smiling because, that's why I said according to the slides. So it might be a different presentation that he's received, I don't know, but the presentation that we received kinda covered a lot of the things that we're concerned about. We're concerned about primarily, I know there's different alternates, but in my opinion, there's only, there's one that they're gonna, obviously, there's one they're gonna select. But I kinda think I know which one, which route they're gonna select. Obviously, they have to, um, analyze during the environmental impact, um, portion, um, preferred route as well as alternative, you know, um, um, route. And I think the preferred rap, route is gonna be the route that, that they initially proposed, and that's to go along the existing corridor. And for some people, that's gonna bring, you know, bring some interjection to some people by them going through that, um, corridor. Now, my thought was that if you can go on Hawthorne Boulevard, somehow get the, the train on Hawthorne Boulevard, we get our people, um, our residents on Hawthorne, which I'm, are major thoroughfare. But I have to reiterate that, there's no way that I'm gonna support going Hawthorne Boulevard or down any other Boulevard if that requires acquisition of property in the domain of, of property. That's not gonna happen. I did mention, uh, why they did not look at, well, this, I asked them, why did they not take a look at going down Manhattan Beach Boulevard and then going down, um, um, Hawthorne instead of on the freeway and then jumping off the freeway and then have to get some more right-of-way and acquire those right-of-ways? And they explained that they did take a look at, um, the Manhattan Beach, going down Manhattan Beach, but because of the underground utilities in the freeway, then it was not, um, it was cost prohibitive. And that's why it wasn't one of the, the, um, alternative routes that they were looking at. I don't think they will, will do the freeway, go off the freeway and then down Hawthorne Boulevard, that's just my assessment of it. You know, I mean, that's a Metro call, but I would not support if there, if there's some eminent domain or any property acquisition going down Hawthorne Boulevard. And that puts us back, of course, in the, the existing right-of-way. But they had some nice drawings and they, they had provisions for the, the trenching, um, of the trenching, which is what, what we want. Of course, we would, would, would love to have underground and complete undergrounding, but they had the diagrams show the trenching, um, as well as their policy now, um, allows for all, um, cross-grade. So all the intersections that we were concerned about supposedly would be, um, um, not at grade. So they, there won't be a disruption in the flow of traffic, this is if they do the, the proposed route. So it was a good conversation, I mean, the, the, the details are, are the details. And, uh, we'll continue to, to work with, with Metro to make sure that our voices are heard. But I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed, um, on, on, on that meeting. And I thank Supervisor Hahn for having a sit-down with, with the three cities. And of course, residents, make sure you, um, voice your concerns either to the city council, to Metro directly. Your board members for Metro, there's, there's a few of them, but primarily, your board supervisor member, of course, is Mark Really Thomas. He's on the, on the Metro Board, as well as Mayor James Butt, who is your representative for the South Bay area. Um, so reach out to those, um, folks to make sure they are aware of your, your position on the Metro Green Line Extension. Okay, I'll talk to them.
I have one thing to add, may I?
Yes, yes, sir.
On the January eighteen Landale Tribune, under comments, I made a comment about, we talked about the, uh, El Segundo with the sales tax. There's a last line in it, it should, it should have read, this tax measure is proposed to protect the city. Not this tax measure is proposed to help migrate expanding budget deficits due to pension costs. That line is erroneous, and I don't know if the writer was tired or she got the wrong information, that's why I don't do interviews. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, okay, so with that, that means we are now on item, item twelve, and it's, what, eight fifteen? Okay, we're going pretty good.
It's real.
J twelve, have we passed J twelve? Let me see, J twelve, we're at J twelve now.
Fourteen.
J four, J fourteen? Okay, so J fourteen is a, a conference, um, with the real property negotiator concerning redevelopment, um, agency. Let's have our, right, let's have our speaker who wants to speak on, um, item number fourteen, redevelopment agency.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council. For having me, uh, Dan Omquist with Frontier Real Estate.
Bring that up for me just a little.
We obviously provided a lot of detail prior to your closed session, uh, meeting, where we're currently at. Um, I wanted to come just make sure it's absolutely clear that we are moving ahead, uh, full speed with Rock and Brews. Uh, Michael Zissles, who signed the letter that we sent to you, uh, we've engaged all of our third-party consultants, including architects, engineers. Uh, it's very exciting what their team is coming up with specifically for the Rock and Brews here for Landale. I alluded to some of it in the letter. Uh, it's gonna be larger than some of the surrounding Rock and Brews and Redondo, El Segundo, uh, some of the programming and activities that they've proposed. They're just really excited about this project. Uh, I think I alluded, they're actually looking to move their corporate offices here for Zissles Group, which owns the Shade Hotels, uh, a number of restaurants down in Manhattan Beach, uh, they're doing a new concept with George Lopez. Uh, they're doing a lot with Sam Mallwell Casino, uh, in addition to Rock and Brews. So they're a, a creative group, uh, very active, uh, this is their backyard, a lot of these guys live in Manhattan Beach and some of the surrounding South Bay communities. Um, you know, obviously, we're trying to, to go out and acquire additional land, uh, you know, we don't have to. Uh, we, we've always, you know, been working with, uh, the Felix Padilla piece and then obviously the city piece. Um, we have had good conversations with Tom Neely, as I alluded to in the letter. Uh, would be happy to, to come back or to answer any questions you might have with those negotiations, we do have an agreement with him. Uh, it is expensive, there's business relocation fees, uh, there's fees associated with the property. Uh, you know, and that's the reason that we propose, propose a second tenant. But, uh, you know, we're grateful for, you know, Sean's been good to work with for us. Um, you know, I think that it, it's a, it's a project that I just wanna make sure everybody is absolutely clear that the Rock and Brews is going ahead full speed. You know, we are working very closely with them. Their goal is they wanna have this open, they wanted to have it open by summer, I told them I thought that'd probably be kinda tough, but we're still trying to get it open before the end of the year. So, uh, if you have any questions on any of the content that, that was covered in that, that letter that I provided the council, would be, I'm more than apt to answer any questions, uh, this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, um, unless there's any other comments, we will, we have a, a, a few closed sessions, let's see, items. Actually, we have three closed session items.
Four with the addendum.
Four with the addendum, yes, ma'am, four with the addendum, okay, here's the addendum, okay, so we have four closed session items. I'm gonna ask the city attorney. Okay, so we have four closed session items. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us the provision for which we would go under closed session.
The city council will meet in closed session pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D four to consider whether to initiate litigation in two different matters. Then the city council will meet in closed session to confer with its real property negotiator regarding the property that Mr. Omquist just spoke about at the corner of Manhattan and Hawthorne Boulevards. And then lastly, the council will meet in closed session regarding one matter of anticipated litigation regarding initiating litigation against the City of Redondo Beach relating to the proposed expansion of the South Bay Galleria Mall. Thank you.
Okay, so that, okay, that would be the order. We're going to stand in recess.
The council voted unanimously to in, initiate litigation against the property owner at four-seven-three-eight West one-hundred-and-fifty-third Street. And the other three items, the council was updated, no report of action. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, madam, um, city attorney for that report. Okay, so we have exhausted our, our, our calendar for today. For tonight's session, uh, next order of business is adjournment. Okay. So tonight, we're going to, um, close this adjournment, rather, this meeting in, in honor of, and you may want to say something there. No, no, that, that, that's not this session. That's, that's totally, that's something separate. Thank you. Uh, we're going to close this, um, session of the, tonight's city council in, in honor of Fran Ramsey, who sadly passed away last week. Um, it's with heavy hearts that we have to report that, um, she passed away. And I just want to, um, read just a little bit of information about Fran. Um, most of us are familiar with, um, Fran Ramsey. Um, she's been a, a icon in, in this community for, for how many years? For decades? Okay, he said decades. Um, she's really been a, early sixties, really been a pillar of the community. She along with her, uh, late husband, Jim Ramsey. But Fran was born in Illinois and she moved to California with her family about the time that she started high school. Fran was the wife of former council member Jim Ramsey, who served on this council for a, a number of years, and I had the honor of serving, um, with him. She and Jim were married for fifty-three years, and they have three children, um, James, Tina Marie, and John Dale. Um, Fran, she was a notary, notary public for twenty-one years before retiring. Now, prior to that, she worked for, uh, Mississippi Electronics in Cypress, California. And she worked on many community, um, events and community, um, um, committees. Among them was the Youth Day Parade Committee, the Beauty Page Committee, the Beautification Committee, the Senior Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Committee, Angel Tree Lighting, the South Bay Twenty-Five Club in Santa Slay, the Boy Scout Troops ninety-seven C, William Green Elementary PTA, and she was the past president of the Landale Travel Club, and we would truly, uh, miss her. Uh, a memorial service this ten-lately will be planned for March the ninth at the Earl Hoffman, uh, Community Center. Uh, details will follow, um, with more about that, um, later as the, the family firms up, um, the, the arrangements. So we want to adjourn in Fran Ramsey's, um, honor and memory, um, tonight. Okay, so we will, that would be the order. In our hearts, it goes out to the, the family. We actually have some family members here tonight. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Okay, with that, I should read that the, um, the city hall will be closed for the President's Holiday. Oh, okay, on the next regular, um, meeting day. Therefore, the next meeting of the Landale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM on Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, in these here chambers. And with that being the case, we stand adjourned. It is now eight fifty-two. We are adjourned.